Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order on Tuesday, May 12th. This is a joint meeting of the Katahdie City Council and the successor agency to the former Katahdie Community Redevelopment Agency. And it is 7:01 PM. Not too bad. Can we do roll call, please?
Councilmember Deloso.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Landman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Present.
Mayor Skilman. Here. Thank you. And this evening, for a change of pace, I was going to ask our resident Boy Scout, Jacob, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you could please stand.
(Inaudible) two to five, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Now, move on to approval of minutes and notice awaiting a reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any aye opposed? All right, we'll call that a 5-0 vote to approve the minutes. Now, move on to our regular meeting items. If I could ask the deputy city clerk to read our housekeeping items.
Thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of everyone in attendance, please observe the following. Silence electronic devices, including cellphones. Audience members are advised that the chamber and hallways carry sound, so please keep conversations to a minimum or conduct them outside the building. Photographs or video recordings using tripods or other means that would be distracting are to be taken only from the designated media area along the south wall of the chamber. Members of the public wishing to address the council are asked to complete a separate speaker card for each item. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrance to the chamber. Place the completed speaker cards in the tray located by the city clerk. And when their name is called, speakers should come forward to the podium and direct their comments to the city council.
Thank you, and I apologize for getting your title wrong, "City Clerk." Now, we'll move on to announcements. The City of Katahdie has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Katahdie Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Katahdie business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Ronat Park Katahdie Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at 584-9121, or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Katahdie Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and by appointment. For more information, call 794-0304. Citizens interested in receiving City of Katahdie community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com. The Katahdie Police joins other local public safety departments and the California Office of Traffic Safety in the 2015 Click It or Ticket campaign, May 19th through June 1st. Our officers will be focusing enforcement on unbelted drivers and passengers, which includes making sure children are properly restrained. Please wear your seat belts. The City of Katahdie, along with Daily Acts, is hosting a Rockin' Homesteads Tour on May 16th from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. This event is in collaboration with the Sonoma Marin Saving Water Partnership's Eco-Friendly Garden Tour. More information can be found on the city's website at katahdicity.org. The Katahdie City Council invites interested individuals to apply for membership on the city's Design Review Committee. Two seats are up for appointment. One is for a person who is skilled in energy use and solar technology and design, and one is an at-large position. See the city's website at katahdicity.org for more information and application materials. Applications will be accepted through May 21st. I'd now like to turn it over to our city manager, Damian Ovid, to introduce us to some new faces around City Hall.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, we have two new employees I'd like to introduce to you all today, as well as to the public that's joined us tonight. The first is John Paul, or JP, as we call him. Come on up to the speaker's podium, please. So JP, he's graduated from Sonoma State with a BS in Biology and an emphasis in Ecology. And he is our new associate planner in Community Development. He has 17 years of professional experience, most recently with the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, the TRPA. And he has a broad range of projects and planning experience, including residential, commercial, tourist accommodations, downtown commercial redevelopment, stream, wetland, and lakeshore restoration. I don't use much lakeshore restoration here, but maybe stream restoration. And conservation, as well as transportation projects. He lives with his fiancee, Tina, actually very nearby here in Pengrove. And he has two dogs, and he travels a lot, and likes to ski, scuba dive, hike, garden, and fly gliders, I'm assuming the handheld ones.
No.
Not the dangerous ones that you actually sit in, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, anyway, JP is a wonderful addition to our staff, and already he's proving to be a good fit in Community Development, so we're happy to have him.
Thank you, Damian. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I just want to let you know that I'm very happy to be here. As Damian said, I live just outside of town, actually, and unincorporated. But Katahdie is my hometown. It is where I shop, it's where I buy my groceries, it's where my dog goes to the vet. And so, when this job became available, I was so excited, and extremely more excited when I was actually selected for the position. So, just very impressed so far with everybody I've met. Staff just seems to be great. Tammy and Vicki and Damian, they've all been very helpful, very professional. And we just seem like a great team. I'm really excited. Every day, I'm excited to be here. I also am very impressed with the council. I was here for when the general plan was adopted. And it was the first time I've actually seen a board that much engaged and responsive to the public. And I thought, I was very impressed. And I'm really looking forward to working with a council that's that responsive to the public. So, if there's anything you want to ask me, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Sure. Good ending to your stand-up to say that we're good, so that was good. Yeah, just a couple of things. It's great certainly to have you onboard. I think travel's going to be kept to a minimum, and no more flying and gliders. We need to get that in his job description. No flying gliders. Makes me really nervous. But, all kidding aside, JP, you have some great background, it sounds like, in working up in the Tahoe region. There's a multitude of complexities that are going on up there. So, this will be a good fit, and it's a great city, and it's made great by the wonderful staff that we have here, and the engaging citizens that we have, which you'll find out. So, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right. And I was just going to reiterate. Welcome, JP. JP is first initial, last name?
John Paul. First name.
So, Paul's the last name.
No.
Harris is the last.
Oh, Harris, I didn't catch your last name. Harris. Not related to the casino?
No, no.
I was just going to say the same thing. Welcome. And when you talked about gliding, being on the insurance board, my ears perked up a little bit, and I thought, maybe we'll just get a waiver or something like that. But, welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Councilman Lemon.
I'm not going to say a thing about the gliding, but I am going to join my colleagues, going to welcome you here. I'm glad to hear you're excited to be here. We're excited to have you here. And I can say without a doubt, without even asking, I'm sure the Community Developer Director, Parker, is very excited to have you here. So, yes, indeed. So, welcome, JP. Nice to meet you in person.
Thank you very much.
And did you want to see Councilman Hall?
Now, I understand why Vicki has had such a smile on her face. You can tell the burden has been lifted, but welcome. We're glad to have you, and so glad that you're joining the team.
Thank you.
And I will remember your name very easily, because my stepfather's name is also JP for John Paul, so.
Oh.
Right there with ya.
Must be a thing with John Paul. We all shorten it to JP for some reason.
And he gets really mad if anybody calls him Paul, anyway. So, anyway, welcome. Very nice to have you, and thank you for helping us spread the workload a little bit and make things run more smoothly. So, welcome, and it's nice to have you here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, I also want to introduce Norman Veloso. He's our Admin Services Director. And so, Norm, he graduated from San Francisco State University with a BS in Business Administration. He has 25 years of experience in auditing, accounting, and budgeting, with most of his experience in municipal finance in the City of Fairfield. So, we're very fortunate to be able to have Norm here with us. And he's also a certified public accountant and a recent empty nester. So, he has a lot of spare time on his hands, I guess. And he lives with his wife, who's a nurse. And he's also quickly, he's fitting quickly and dived into the city budgeting process, which is the time of year that Norm was lucky enough to join us in. So, he has certainly no lack of things to do. And it's been good having him.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I just wanted to mention to you guys that actually, being an empty nester is a great feeling. We have two beautiful daughters. One is a graduate, an economics graduate at UCM. And we have a 17-year-old daughter right now that left for college, that's going for Cal Poly Slow. And so, my wife and I decided that this is a chance for us to kind of like spread our wings, and we didn't expect that we'd be spreading my wings here in Katahdie from Vallejo. But, it's a great change. I believe that change is anonymous opportunity, an opportunity to be a part of a new city, a new vision, new great people. I think it's exciting, and so I'm thrilled to be here.
Well, thank you. Do we want to go along with the welcome? Councilmember Landman.
I'm glad to hear that you have a lot of spare time. I want you to enjoy that, this last few minutes you might have. Seriously speaking, you know, sometimes people get jobs, and they wonder, is there enough work for me to keep my job? Gosh, the good news is that I think you're quickly finding we have more than enough for you to do and catch up here. So, again, we're very pleased to have you here, Norm. And let me give you a hearty welcome.
Thank you.
I just want to say, welcome, Norm. I am curious, the size of the city you came from?
Yes.
Was significantly bigger?
Very, yes.
So, you worked with a staff of probably?
Three or four, yes.
Yeah, just in the financial.
Just financial. Correct.
Well, welcome. And are you still residing in Vallejo, or?
Yes, I do. I've been commuting and taking the opposite route of the scenic route of Sonoma, going from 29 to 121. So, that takes me about 35 minutes to 45 minutes on a good day. And being an empty nester, I don't have to worry about packing lunches and all that, so we're just so glad to have that time to focus on our careers right now.
Well, if you like it here, the market is up in Vallejo, so you'll probably do well coming over. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, this side.
Do you go by Norm or Norman?
Norm is fine.
Norm is fine.
As long as you guys don't say "Norm."
Ew.
Cheers, show.
No, but Damian went through your last name really quick, and I was wondering if we're?
Sounded like Deloso, right?
Yeah, I wonder if we're related.
Yeah, I'm part Portuguese. My grandfather's Portuguese.
Okay, and what's your last name again?
Deloso. D is in Victor.
Oh, man, that was really close. Okay, so, we're not related. So, that's probably good from a legal standpoint. That's probably really good. Yeah, all I can really say is, you know, I cannot believe that you have 25 years of service. You look significantly younger than to have worked 25 years as a professional.
I started my career at the Piers Waterhouse Coopers at the age of 10.
10? Okay, great, great. So, well, we're going to really set the bar high then, is all I can really say. But, welcome aboard. This is great that we're filling these long-term vacancies, so it's really important.
Thank you.
Councilman Harvey.
Well, welcome. We're so glad to have someone so experienced. And about the empty nest thing, just so you know, they sometimes come back.
They do.
So, taking?
Close our doors.
John's cue there, you may want to consider moving just so they?
Far away, right?
Yeah, yeah, just because they do come back. But, you're in the hot and heavy season of budget, and we're so glad. Can't wait to see what you come up with for us. Welcome.
Thank you.
And then, I'll just reiterate to you, welcome. We're really happy to have you here and helping us get ready to push through our budget season, so. And I'm glad that you've been here a week, and you haven't run screaming for the hills yet, so we appreciate that persistence.
Love the challenge.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Thank you.
All right, and we'll move on to proclamations. This week, we're declaring the weekend of May 16th and 17th as Community Resilience Challenge Weekend. And I have a proclamation here. I believe, do you want to come forward, or? No, I'll run through the wherethes really quickly, and then I'll give you a moment. Whereas the City of Katahdie is concerned about the health and well-being of its residents and seeks to create a healthy, sustainable, and livable community. And whereas in 2005, all Sonoma County cities and the county adopted the boldest community greenhouse gas emissions reduction target in the United States, 25% below 1990 levels by 2015. And what, is that me? I don't know. Okay. Whereas last year, the 5th Annual Community Resilience Challenge inspired hundreds of people across Sonoma County to complete 7,052 actions to save water, grow food, conserve energy, and build community. And whereas the City of Katahdie provides, through key partners such as Daily Acts, programs and services that educate residents, students, businesses, and community leaders about sustainable practices. Whereas local governments greatly influence the opportunities for growing, eating, and sharing healthy food, and becoming more water and energy efficient through key powers over land and water use planning and policies, economic and community development, parks and recreation, and other community services. And now therefore be proclaimed, on this 12th day of May 2015, the City Council of the City of Katahdie does hereby declare May 16th and 17th Community Resilience Challenge Weekend in the City of Katahdie.
Well, thank you, members of the council, Mayor. My name is Brianna, and I'm happy to be here tonight on behalf of Daily Acts. The Community Resilience Challenge is a call to action. Participants are installing gray water systems, sheet mulching lawns, planting gardens, installing drip irrigation, hosting potlucks and tool shares, pledging to consider the end life of their purchases, and so much more. There's really something for everybody. Six years ago, a group of citizens came together with support from the water agency and health action, with an outlandish goal of planting 350 gardens in a single weekend, to grow food, save water, and build community. Now, five years later, we have doubled our results nearly every year, and this program has spread regionally, nationally, resulting in over 35,000 actions and projects that make our community more resilient. Our goal this year is 7,000 registered actions in Sonoma County, and we are over halfway there at this point. I'd like to ask each of the council members, those in the audience, those listening at home or online, to go and register your actions today, to support your community, and help Daily Acts tell the story of a skilled, connected, and engaged Sonoma County, acting together on solutions to the pivotal issues facing our planet today. With your help, we are creating a more connected, vibrant, and resilient community, one act at a time. We are very grateful to the City of Katahdie for the proclamation and support of the Community Resilience Challenge, and I thank you so very much for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. So, I'll come around, give you the official paperwork here.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we'll move on to our honorary mayor. We have Cameron Fernandez here from Technology Middle School.
Hi. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. It's an honor to be here and to represent the City of Katahdie as honorary mayor of the month of May 2015. My name is Cameron Fernandez. I've been living in the City of Katahdie since 2002. I am 14-years-old and currently going to Technology Middle School as an eighth grader, soon to be in the first group of eighth graders graduating from TMS. After I graduate, I'm going to be a freshman at Tech High, and I'm very excited. I just completed a season on the track team, competing in events such as 4x100 shot put, and a few times I did the 100-meter dash. After I graduate high school, I want to become a photographer and explore the world. After a few years of exploring the world and being a photographer, I want to become a veterinarian and help the animals. Mostly, growing up, I didn't notice all the fascinating things in the world and all the cool things that I have never seen before, and growing up, I learned lots of things. I've learned there are many places to discover, and for a young adult to go on adventures to see. Most of the goals in life are to just explore this big world and see new things. My mission this month is to research the City of Katahdie and learn ways that I can participate in the community.
Very well done. We were talking earlier about how it's a little nerve-wracking to get up in front of all these people, and you did that, you aced it. Great job. All right, so, I'll go down the line and see if anybody's got any questions or comments for you. So, Councilmember Deloso.
Sure. I love to start these conversations. It's fun. So, if you're interested in being a veterinarian, do you have pets at home?
Yes.
Yeah, what do you have?
I have two dogs, and one rabbit, and one chicken.
And one chicken? I love my chicken, too. We have a chicken at home, too. You know, there's a lot of volunteer opportunities. Do you guys, I know at the high school level, usually there's 40 hours of community service. Do you have any, like, at the middle school there? Do you have any requirements that you have to do?
I don't think.
No? Okay, so, you're off the hook there. But, but, you should find out about the group that just got the proclamation, Daily Acts. They do a lot of work in the city, and there's a place called Pocket Park, which is like between the L section and the bird section, as we refer to these areas of Katahdie, in a polite way, since we live there, and we know what that's like. And it's a really cool concept that they have done over there. It's been there for a number of years, doing drought-tolerant plants and planting some things that are edible. And it's right outside my backyard, so I get to see it like every day. But, there's always a need for work, and maybe, you know, you can grab some of your friends and come over when they have a workday, which is coming up. Thought I'd say that. And it might be a great opportunity for you, not only to just to do that, because it's a great feeling, but you learn a lot from there, too. So, yeah, you did a fantastic job. You know, I'm amazed at, and I can say this because I'm 53, at these kids that keep coming up here as our honorary mayors, and you guys are eloquent, you're bright, you're articulate. It's like, where was that when I was that age? Why didn't I have those skills? You have an answer? I don't want to hear it. That's great. Great that you're here, and there'll be more questions coming your way. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Councilman Harvey.
Yes, you are an excellent speaker. I hope that you utilize that in some of what you're doing. I think as you go do your world travels, that that, being able to speak and talk to people, I think, is really important. And you have a very gentle way of talking to folks. On the veterinarian thing, another thought that you might have is like during the summer, you know, when you're not busy over in Pocket Park, you might want to consider working with animals and stuff, because I know the shelters need help, and you might even be able to volunteer at one of the vets' offices, or something like that. But, animals are great, and they give undivided love to you. So, and I can tell that that's kind of that connection that you have. So, I wish you the best, and you might be able to start with photographing animals. So, there you go. And I can't wait till you come back.
Thank you.
All right, and I'll go to the side. Councilmember Lemon.
Well, thank you. I appreciate, you know, usually, we ask people to come talk, and then we try to ask them to think about things that they could do for Katahdie. And you were a step ahead of us tonight, because you already led us there with your rather well-crafted statements, so I think that's great. We actually have Jacob Smith in the back room, who recently just completed a large volunteer project for the city. And I'm knowing he's so wishing he'd met you two weeks ago, I think it would have made this last couple of weekends easier for him, but that's great. You know, we have a lot of community spirit in our young people in Katahdie. It's great to see, and we really appreciate it. I was struck how you kept mentioning a common thread, adventures, explore, see the world, learn new things, and I think that's wonderful. You know, so often, people at a younger age worry, what am I going to do? What career do I pick? Gosh, they want to make that decision before they even get there. And I find that if you just start, you'll wind up somewhere good. It's just get started, and who knows where that leads? It could be going in one direction and winding somewhere else. But, with your approach to doing things, I think you'll do well. So, a pleasure to meet you, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Hi, Cameron. Thank you for coming.
...to organize events for themselves. You can offer the teens community service hours to help with the younger kids in the playground. As I learned very well as a substitute teacher for years, treat teenagers with respect, and they will do the right thing. There are a lot of good kids around. The City of Santa Rosa has done this for many years. All the participants have to do is a card filled out and signed by a parent. Just ask Santa Rosa for a copy of theirs. Also, sign up the site to get free lunches bags from the food bag. There's not one site in Katahdie for the summer lunch bag program compared to five in Ronat Park. I'm sure there's hungry kids in Katahdie. Even though I'm ticked as heck at all of you, I feel for the kids in Katahdie. I have experience as a director of a program for Santa Rosa Recreation and Parks. I ran a summer day camp for a few years. I volunteered to get things going. I know how to make those relays, lanyards, and other camp and group activities. By the way, you could hire my brother, the one just back from living in Beijing. He's one of those teachers looking for summer work. Mainly, though, do something. Don't let things stay the same around here. Kids shouldn't be playing video games all summer.
Thank you for that. No, I don't have any more speaker cards. Is there anybody else who wanted to speak during citizens business? Yes, please, come forward.
Hello.
Hello.
Andre Morrow, citizen of Katahdie, run the Katahdie Jazz Festival for the last 14 years, and as well as Kids Day. And I just wanted to thank Jacob, because we use that bandstand, and I really appreciate you. And if you weren't gone, it sounds like you're going to be gone on the 20th. Jazz Festival's on the 21st. I would love to, I would have been introduced to you and had the crowd give you a standing ovation, but I'll do it right here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, does anybody else have anything to add to citizens business? All right, and I realize I didn't read the blurb. Am I going to be in big, big trouble?
No, I'll speak with you after.
Okay. So, we'll move on to direction of future agenda items. Does anybody have anything they would like to add to a future agenda?
I do have a question. I know that we talked about it previously. Do you have a timetable on when you're looking at the smoking ordinance?
So, it's on the future council agenda, and right now, we are, we're working on getting it before Planning Commission first. And so, we expect it to go to Planning Commission in the not-too-distant future. So, I mean, we're hoping by the, we're hoping before the end of the fiscal year, it'll be before Planning Commission, then the next stop would be here, council.
And I don't know if this is the appropriate protocol on that, but in light of all of the publicity surrounding Fight for 15, and living wages, and things like that, I'd like to explore some sort of adoption of a living wage, and what kind of research that might I know that there has to be, and you can't have just a carte blanche, blanket approach to something like that, but we do have some fast-food establishments here, and we do have some other retail establishments that are over 50 employees, and I don't know that their minimum threshold is a living wage.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else? Yes?
So it's not that we're antsy to have it come, but I think it's important to come. And I know that Santa Rosa very recently went through a pretty interesting discussion at the public forum and, which also included e-cigarettes. And I wasn't sure if, when we brought this issue up some months ago, if we had talked about that, but I'm just wondering if, you know, looking to Santa Rosa staff for what they went through and some of their draft ordinances, might be a good starting place to bring to the Planning Commission than to us, just as an idea.
And we originally talked about it too. I passed on some paperwork to Vicky Parker, but it included the e-cigarette issue. Okay, then we'll move on to consent calendar. And before I ask for anything, I do have a speaker card on this item.
Madam Mayor, would this be an appropriate time to speak in reference to a comment on the Citizens Business?
Oh, sure, if you want to do that.
I just wanted to address the comment regarding the potential for having a summer program for kids in a rec department. We are looking at re-establishing our recreation department and have talked about that, especially in some of our budget study strategic sessions. One of the concerns was to make sure that we were up to staffing levels in some of the more critical arenas and things seem to be going along well. So that is something that we will be considering at a future date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have a speaker card on item number two from Lori Alderman, and that's on the consent calendar, which is the 2015 Water Conservation Education and Outreach.
I am opposed to using the, sorry, Organization Daily Acts as the water conservation contractor. This is not because of the character or reputation of the organization, which I am sure is all wonderful, but because of how it focuses only on one area of Kattati. I hadn't heard of Pocket Park until I looked at the meeting packet for today. The majority of parks' activities and generally city money is spent on that side of town. What do we on the west side of the freeway benefit from this? We don't get a community garden. In reality, people are not going to come to workshops on saving water during the busy summer months. It is just not practical. There aren't enough community togetherness or spirit to attend these walks and tours in Kattati. We are in the west side, have more acreage, more lawns, more gardens and less cement, so we should be priority. Why don't you do an in-house water conservation program? Maybe hire youth and young adults, teach them as future homeowners, these water conservation strategies and then send them out walking the neighborhoods this summer. Have them give out flyers about the toilet and shower, sorry, shower head program or maybe teach them how to do water surveys. Minimum wage, jobs for teens and young adults to help them develop skills. The computer skills of these kids are exceptional. They can make Kattati-specific materials in no time flat. They learn PowerPoint in second grade now. We shouldn't be paying $85 per hour when a smart kid could be doing the same work at minimum wage. Think about using the skills available to us already here in Kattati rather than contracting out. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who wanted to add public comments to the consent calendar items? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council. Do we have a motion for the?
I have a move to approve.
Two and three, items two and three?
Yes.
Yeah, I would second that.
Okay, I have a motion and second on items two and three. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, may the record reflect, it's a five zero vote in favor of consent calendar items. Now move on to regular agenda, item number four, drought water conservation action. And I'll turn to our city manager.
Thank you Mayor, members of the council. So I think as everyone is probably well aware, we're in the third, well going on the fourth year of a statewide drought. And as a result, last year, as you recall, the city council adopted a 20% voluntary water conservation call for action. And then, that was in the spring. And in the fall, after the state initiated some statewide conservation actions, the city council adopted a 20% mandatory reduction in water use. And statewide, the drought situation continues to go from bad to worse. So this spring, the State Water Resources Control Board recently had adopted a revised and updated 20% mandatory reduction statewide. And so the original one, the one that they adopted last year, had a time limit on it and that time limit was set to expire. So they basically re-adopted it but added some new provisions to it. There's a variety of end user requirements that are in the state regulation, as well as a bunch of water retailer requirements. And right on the heels of the state water board adopting the 20% mandatory conservation requirement, the governor called for a 25% mandatory reduction requirement. So that recently went through the state board and was adopted by the state board on May 5th, actually. And so now it's before the Office of Administrative Law and it'll go into effect shortly. As part of the, as part of the updated mandatory water conservation requirement by the state Water Resources Control Board is a, is a new conservation target that the state set. They didn't do this last year, but they're doing it this year, where they're looking at all the urban water suppliers in the state and they're, and they're setting specific conservation standards for them. And that, it's based on the, it's based on what they call demand hardening or how well they've been doing in water conservation in the past. So if you're a community that has basically taken no steps to save water, you're going to end up with a 30% or 36% water conservation requirement, which is backstopped by some, some potentially hefty fines of, you know, $500 per day. And if you fail to, if you fail to comply, then the state could actually, if you fail to comply as a retailer, the state can come in with a cease and desist order, which is $10,000 a day for failing to comply. So, you know, got people's attention. In the staff report, I've included the local communities and what their conservation goals were. And they're set by tiers. So within Sonoma County, the cities, Sonoma and Marin County, the cities fall within tiers four and seven. And basically what that means is tier four is a 16% conservation requirement, and that's Petaluma, Rona Park, Santa Rosa and Windsor. Next up would be Marin Municipal and Value of the Moon Water District out in Glen Ellen. And they're at 20%. And then North Marin Water District and the City of Sonoma are higher than 20. So North Marin's at 24 and Sonoma's at 28%. And then I also wanted to point out that attached to the staff report are a variety of fact sheets, as well as the regulations that show the changes. And, and what you have in the staff report is the urban, what's called urban water suppliers and the state water code. We, as a small retailer, we don't fall under that category because we have less than 3,000 connections and we deliver less than 3,000 acre feet a year. So there's basically a big long regulation for everyone else. And at the very end, there's us, which is you can either implement 25% reduction or you can limit irrigation to two days a week. Those are the two options. So we don't get a target. I had discussions with the state board, because I wanted to set our own target based on the state board methodology, but they specifically, they responded to me and specifically said, no, you can't do that, you have to follow the regulations. And our legal, our legal assistants also confirmed that that would be the better way to go. So that's what's in the proposed resolution, is basically restating the individual actions that are required under the new state regulation, as well as a limitation of two days a week for ornamental irrigation. And then there's a carve out that we created that's not in the regulation, defining ornamental versus non-ornamental. And non-ornamentals, as you'll see in the resolution, defined as public, like turf that are used for activity fields, and they're, they're limited in this proposed resolution to three days a week, which is enough to keep the grass kind of, you know, kind of greenish brown, but keeps it usable for, as an activity field for soccer and baseball and that sort of thing. So that is basically it in a, in a big nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I had a quick question for our city attorney. Before we get there, is this going to be four separate motions on this? Because we're rescinding, potentially instituting specific end user, implementing stage two and then imposing certain limitations. So I didn't know if you wanted that outlined individually.
It can be one resolution.
Perfect.
Motion. I'm not sure, I'm looking at the title of the resolution and it doesn't call out the rescission, but, so that's something we'd want to just make sure we add if that's what you wish to do and go forward with a new one.
Okay, thank you. So I'll turn to councilmembers, see if there are any questions or comments for staff and then we'll open it up to the other comment. Yeah, Councilwoman Harvey.
Damian, I know we have the cash for grass and we have the toilet replacement. Have we given any more thought to expanding that program to include other things like recirculating water pumps? I know that, at least at our house, that's made a really big difference, because you get hot water now and it's on a timer such that you can set it for the normal time when you would be using hot water. But there's no having to get a bucket out and waiting for hot water. It's, you get the hot water now. So I just wasn't sure how we go about changing that to look at that and consider it, because it was not a very expensive item.
I know that the, you know, all the retailers are looking at a variety of water conservation activities above and beyond what we're currently doing in this region. And that is one of them that is being looked at, actually right now, because we're doing the, we're starting the next round of the Urban Water Management Plan. And as part of that, they look at the, it's called demand modeling. And they look at the, they look at the supply as well as, as well as the demand, including in supply, one of the categories of supply is conservation, because when you conserve the water, you effectively create more supply. And they're looking at, I believe it's 25 separate water conservation actions that we could take in addition to, you know, what we're doing now. So that is one of the things that we're looking at regionally and maybe locally, depending on the cost effectiveness.
Thank you. And so another hand, Councilmember Delauso.
Yeah, a few questions. I'm just wondering, this is for you or for Vicky, but in the whole design review and planning process, do we have any specifications, regulations in place right now for commercial development where we would discourage turf? You know, I know a few of the businesses back there have wide expanses of lawn and of course, these, the businesses themselves are not really set up for individuals to go in to purchase things. It's a, it's a commercial operation. So, and I'm just wondering, do we have any kind of, any regulations or whatever we want to call them? And I'm speaking just of commercial spaces now.
I can speak to the development process first and then Damian may want to add some things for existing customers, but the way it's handled with new development or significant remodels is that the ordinance strongly discourages turf and encourages native and drought tolerant. The guidelines are actually 80% drought tolerant and 50% native. And so that combination usually excludes most turf areas. And, and then, so that's brand new development and/or a significant remodel or oftentimes a use permit with building alterations, it'll kick it into that need to re-landscape as well. And they have to, there's also a threshold in the building code where they have to comply with Cal Green Tier One, which has a 20% reduction in water use built into it over business as usual.
Okay, that's good to know. I did actually hear a NOAA representative in the last couple of days with a short term and long term forecast. El Nino is here. The ocean waters are warmer by a couple of degrees and they're calling for, which is interesting, significant rain this late summer into early fall for the Bay Area. Significant rains. Rain, of course, significant could be two inches, you know, but, but that's significant for this time of year. And when this person was pressed to look at the long range forecast, which they did, he kind of turned silent, which was a little depressing. So, you know, we could be, we could be in this for a little bit longer. And to me, of course, the key's always been conservation at so many different levels. You know, bringing the shower in the bucket, it's great. I've even done away with, and I'm going to put this down on the website, I've done away with my drip system in my vegetable garden, because now it's all the shower water. Shower water, wow, I thought I was hearing things. That's, that's okay.
It's not the voices in your head.
That's promising. And I know through Daily Acts, you know, the educational materials that they put out is for all Kattati citizens, it's certainly not just on one side of the city. And I assume, like when we did Pocket Park, that was city owned property. And to do something on any other, in any other section of town, we would first need to have city owned property to do something like that. Is that not true?
We've, we focused on city owned properties because it, I think it gets much more complicated if you try to spend, you know, the, you know, ratepayer money on private property.
Right, right. So, so that's kind of, it's not a hindrance per se, but I mean, it's going to limit us where we could do other Pocket Park type demonstrations throughout the city. It would have to be on city owned property, so I just, I wanted to point that out. So that's, those were the questions anyway that I had for now. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Harvey.
Something that John said made me think. The, our cash for grass, is that applicable to commercial properties too?
It is, yeah.
So they could take advantage, I just, when you said that, it made me think, well gee, you know, are they eligible? But they are eligible. Do they even know they're eligible?
They, well, I know, I mean, we've mailed them before.
Oh, okay.
We have, I mean, we have contacted them. But I think they tend to, you know, unless, unless they're ecologically minded or they're, you know, they're concerned about their water bill, you know, like anyone, right? They wouldn't normally contact us. But we definitely do outreach to them. And I suspect we'll be doing much more this year, especially with the specific call out and the state regulations.
Yeah, that might be something worthwhile to send like an extra letter to them, you know, reminding them that they are eligible for that and maybe our contract with Daily Acts, maybe that's something that we can have them reach out to those commercial folks, especially some of the ones that, as John pointed out, there's a lot of turf in some of those that, you know, could make a big difference.
It's, you know, again, we thank the Europeans where it rains all the time in places like England for bringing the concept of having green lawns to our drought tolerant state. You can delete that if you need to later.
Right, the Anglo files, okay. Yes, on this side of the dais. Have we covered all the questions you guys had?
Go ahead. I'll save mine for last.
Sounds good to me, thank you. So just a quick question first of all. I'm going to agree, 10K a day, yeah, that's an intention getter. I think you'll sit right up and pay attention to that. But of course, the sad thing is a lot of people, sometimes they're missing a lot of information. There may be some that it's just becoming evident that there's a drought out there. So the general thing I wanted to ask you is, with this new change, how are we planning notify the public? What thoughts? I mean, obviously we have the work that Daily Acts does, we have our water bill, which is a good communication, our website. Anything else we had planned? Because I'd see just for this, but probably if this continues for another year or so and things get more serious, that method of communication's going to be pretty important.
So, well locally, we, you know, we use Daily Acts for outreach. We use our water bill mailer, which traditionally has been going to residential properties, but we've been talking about expanding notifications to all accounts, which is another mechanism. We, we do of course have our website and our marquee and our sort of traditional, you know, tabling during the summertime at summer events, those sort of traditional outreach mechanisms. Regionally, we're also part of the Sonoma Marin Water Saving Partnership and in the packet, there was a bunch of ads in the back. Those, those are the ads that they're running this year. And so those are going to be at a whole variety of places, but those are more countywide efforts where they're going to be, you know, on buses and radio ads and at the Sonoma County Fair and that sort of thing.
Great, well I would certainly support expanding our notification process to a commercial account, so I'm sure there's some value in that, because some of them are big water users and they're probably looking for efficiencies. And also would like to know what are they supposed to do? Because the difference between what we read in the newspaper and actually what we're required and what's appropriate here, sometimes can be vast. And I wanted to suggest perhaps an op-ed piece from the mayor in the Community Voice, small hometown. Easy for me to suggest, because I'm suggesting other people do work. Sorry about that, Yang.
That's okay.
But it seems to me actually as something, small town, very friendly how the mayor suggests, here's what we're doing, here's how you can do it. Any questions, call. And I'm sure the CV would be happy to run that for us too. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes, I'm going to piggyback on some of the other council members and if we look at, we have the cash for grass program, which in essence rebates money per acre or per foot for removal of turf and planting of the- acre or per foot for removal of turf and planting of the drought resistance. I think it would be incumbent upon us to explore a greater incentive for some of the commercial businesses. Because if you look at...